All right, thanks Brian and welcome everyone to this March 11, 2024 meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with an announcement from Deputy Chief Broadhead, who's bringing some good news about money.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time tonight. So David Faulkner reached out to me right before we left this evening and announced that we received $2,500 off a grant that we wrote for the Jefferson County Communication Fund. What we are going to purchase with that is an electrical vehicle fire blanket. So we have two of these now. As you know, electrical vehicles pose a pretty significant hazard to both the fire department and the structures that they're around. They take a lot of water to put out, most of them upwards of 16,000 gallons. We don't carry that on the fire trucks. So this is another technology that we can use to get them out of parking decks, away from buildings. We can smother them with a blanket and then actually tow them away from where they are. These things run about $2,500 apiece. They are reusable, so we won't, it's not a one-time and done. But with this grant that we got from Representative Faulkner's office, we will be able to put one of these on every frontline apparatus that we have, which means that every fire truck in the city will now carry one for their first-in fire calls. So he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did ask that I share this with you guys to make sure that he's helping us in every way he can.
Well, Brian would like a picture.
Yes, he would.
That's why I had Matt bring props.
We'll take it out. It's like a sleeping bag. You'll never get it back.
I was wondering if he was going to pull that out.
I hope.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Counselor Andrus, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Please bow your heads and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all of the blessings you bestow upon us as citizens of Homewood, Alabama. Thank you for the many people who serve and work for our city and our community at large, and for those that are gathered here tonight. Thank you for the sunshine and the beautiful blooms of our city as the days get longer and warmer. Please guide us tonight to work together in harmony, to listen with open ears, to serve our city with open hearts and open minds, and glorify you in all we do. We also pray tonight for the safe travels of our Homewood High School Band students, their families, and our wonderful band directors and faculty. Be with them, Lord, as they travel to and throughout Ireland, and it is in your blessed name that we pray. Amen.
During a case of black, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Counselor Andrus. Mr. Seacrest, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney?
Here.
Geer?
Here.
Alamon?
Here.
Wolverton?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Andrus?
Here.
Harden?
Here.
President Wyatt?
Here.
All right, so we have nine tonight. All right, next is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of February 26, 2024. Those have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is approved nine to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. We'll start with the Arts Council. Ms. Geer, do you want to go through these? Or do you want me to?
Either way, yeah.
Okay. So we've got two at-large positions, so we'll do those first. I understand that one of them is Allison Crawford.
That's right.
Is that correct? So I assume that would be your nomination?
It is.
All right, so we have a nomination for Allison Crawford. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved nine to zero. Then we have a second spot. This is Molly McFarlane.
Yes, another at-large.
All right, so we have a nomination for Ms. McFarlane by Ms. Geer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
She has also approved nine to zero. Then we have a Ward four Arts Council position. I believe this is Natalie Pruitt.
It is, and we'd like to put her up for nomination.
All right, so we have a nomination. And a second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero. And then lastly, a Ward five Arts Council position, Jane Nail.
Jane Nail is our final applicant, yes.
All right, so we have a nomination for Ms. Geer for Ms. Nail. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And all of those are approved nine to zero. All right, then a few reminders that we have a Ward one, two Ward one, Beautification Board positions that close on March 25th, as well as a Ward two BZA position. Ms. Smith, is there a park position that's currently open?
There is.
Ward four on the 25th as well. Okay. All right. We don't have any additions to the agenda tonight, and no consent agenda, so we'll go straight in, I need to approve the agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda. So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Gualdney, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved nine to zero, which will take us to other new business. First item, 2006-23, request for consideration of city manager, brought to us by Mayor McCluskey. I think we're going to drop this item from the council agenda. It's still in Finance Committee, and we're going to continue to deal with it there. But I think we need to, at least for now, to drop this item. It will come back if someone will make a motion.
Moved to drop.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Andrus, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero. Okay, next item, 0902-24, request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 2324. This is brought to us by Randy Hambley and Robert Brigitte, and we'll start with a report from Finance. Ms. Smith, are you handling that?
Yes. The committee met last week, voted three to zero to recommend approving the budget amendments for the Traffic Department vehicle expense. For Randy, the motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Alamon. And then there's a second part of that item, which was about the contractual services in Iron Mountain, which we did not discuss in committee. So we're going to leave that element, that part of the motion, part of the item in committee, but vote to approve the budget amendment for the vehicle, three to zero.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and we resolution 2430. Next item, 1002-24, request for consideration to amend city's agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide an online civic access permitting portal and paperless plan review and permitting system, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, we heard from Garth Magnus from Tyler Technologies and Mr. Pugh about this new system that would really kind of take our current permitting system into the, into this century, and make it paperless, as paperless as it can be. Sounds like a great, great thing for the city and for our citizens and builders. We voted, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approving the item. Motion was made by myself and seconded by Mr. Alamon. And there's actually, hold on, are there two resolutions?
There are.
Yes, so we've got the first resolution, which is to approve the budget amendment and transfer money from the Inspection Technology Fund and Contractual Services line items as presented by Mr. Brigitte.
All right, so we were going to have two votes here, because we've got two motions from Finance. The first is for the approval of the budget amendment and the transfer. Any questions or comments about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and we resolution 2431. Then we have, also have a motion from Finance to approve the mayor signing the amended contract. Any questions or comments about that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero, and we resolution 2432. Next item, 1102-24, request to set a bid opening date for fire facilities maintenance bid, brought to us by Deputy Chief Broadhead. And another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
We voted four to zero, the Finance Committee voted four to zero to recommend setting the bid date for this item for April the 22nd, 2024, at 4:30, and the motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by myself.
All right, so we will set that bid date for April 22nd, 2024. All right, next item, 1202-24, request for consideration for special event liquor license at the Homewood Public Library, brought to us by Michelle Hammack and J.J. Bischoff. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Gualdney?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met last week and voted four to zero to recommend, having no objection, to issuance of the license. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden. I did find out, Mr. Bischoff, we are confirmed that we're good on the insurance side of, okay, so we should be good here.
Great.
So I would make that motion for approval.
All right, so we-
Oh, I'm sorry. I came to the committee.
That's okay. So we have a motion from the committee to offer no objection to the issuance of this license. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero as well. Next item, 0402-24, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2732 Central Avenue, brought to us by Supertone and Christine Thornton and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this was actually in committee on February 19th, and the committee heard from the applicant and voted five to zero to recommend setting the public hearing for tonight, and sending out the item without recommendation from the, from the committee pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And I think we have the applicants at the podium.
Yes, so I think you have in your packet the elevation of the sign. And the reason we're asking for a sign that wraps the corner is, this is in that old Huff Settler space. It's the space to the left. The building is actually set back off Central by 100 feet. And you know, Central has kind of an elbow, like this, and the building sits, the corner kind of meets the elbow, so it's funny. You can't read the sign kind of from one side or the other. You miss it. And so we'd like to request that the sign wrap the corner.
And Mr. Pugh, am I remembering correctly that it's the fact that it's on two sides of the building, the variance?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I may be accused of being overly careful in some of my sign reviews, but, but the way the ordinance is-
Better than the alternative.
That's right. I'm worried about setting a precedent accidentally, so. The ordinance permits one wall sign per storefront, and the way we've consistently interpreted it is a building can have one storefront, so.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Nothing, I'll close the public hearing. Ask if there are any questions or council, questions or comments from council. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I guess, just thinking about the alternative, right? The alternative potentially would be when we provide these sorts of variances, is to put two signs on each wall, right? So that we make sure that folks can see it from whichever direction they're coming for. So this might potentially be a better solution than allowing two signs. You're allowing one sign still, though I understand your point of setting precedent. I just think that it's one of those situations where this might be a good solution, but I'm curious to hear from other folks. I'm still kind of trying to figure out what the best way forward here is.
In this particular instance, I don't think there's a lot of buildings like this that have, or on a curve, set back off the road with a corner like that. But I hear what you're saying, and honestly, I think there's probably some adjustments to the sign, sign ordinance that we can make. Kind of like when we have the double front yards, and we talk about they have to come and get a fence permit to put the fence around their backyard, because it's considered a front yard, you know. So, I mean, but in this particular case, I think it's a pretty unique situation in terms of the location and the building, and the fact that there is other stuff over there too, because there's, isn't there another business down on the end, in the other part of the building?
Correct, yeah, GHT, and they have their sign already on that one side, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then also forgot to say, ours would be hand-painted signs. So we're really excited about the quality and unique character it would bring.
No lights, right, no lights, no backlight or anything.
So it's just, it's just almost a, I mean, what we see up there right now almost looks like it's, I would use the term painted, glued on. Is that what it's going to be?
It's painted. So it's actually, Gabby, I'm forgetting her last name, she's a really incredible artist. She actually hand-painted all the signs on the inside of the studio. And so pending approval from you guys, she would come and actually hand-paint the sign. So it would be, you know, akin to the way things used to do, like 100 years ago.
Almost like the mirror holes that are so popular in the downtown. I mean, unless anybody else has any-
I would just like to add that it's very similar, I mean, Hero, we allowed the two signs on that corner for same situation. It's right down the street.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, the second from Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved nine to zero, and will be resolution 2433. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, 1302-24, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at 1706 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Jenny Levens, Goody's Toy Store and Wyatt Pugh. So we are, that public hearing, I think, is set already-
For 325.
For 325, right.
That's what we made the motion to set it.
Has it not been set yet?
We, we made the, we said that was what we were doing in committee, but we haven't set it here.
Got it. So then let me get a report from Special Issues.
Okay. Yes, we heard from Mr. Levens. This is the former Hero Donuts shop on Central, on the corner of Central and Oxmore, that is beginning to become the Goody's Toy Store. And we voted to send this out without recommendation pending the public hearing that we would like to set for March 25th.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Kendrick.
Is Central.
Yeah, as opposed to Oxmore.
That's correct.
Right.
Got it. So the, so we will then set a public hearing for March 25th for the address 3027 Central Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's right.
Got it.
It's just right on that corner, so there was some confusion about whether Central or Oxmore.
Okay. All right, all right. So then that public hearing is now set. The next item, 0502-24, public hearing set for tonight for reconsideration to rezone 1300 Columbiana Road from I-2 to C-1. Appearant is Eric Rogers, Progressive Properties, P L L C. The owner is Second Presbyterian Church to permit the construction of an 11,000 square foot single-story medical office building. Set proposed rezoning to exclude the southern portion of the subject property presently occupied by the Second Presbyterian Church, which will remain zoned I-2. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a five to zero to one favorable recommendation. All right, we'll start with a report from P and D. Mr. Gualdney, I think you're going to handle that?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the committee met, and after hearing from Mr. Easley and Ms. Sellers, the committee voted four to zero to one to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Gomes, seconded by Counselor Sims, with Counselor Andrus abstaining.
All right. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I see Ms. Sellers already at the podium. If you will, just tell us, tell us about this one more time.
Sure, the quick overview. Melinda Sellers representing the applicant, who is the potential purchaser of this property. As you all may recall, we, we had a public hearing on this last fall and have gone back to the drawing board. And first, would like to thank everyone at the city that's helped us with that, especially Kale, Mr. Kendrick, the BZA, the Planning Commission. It's been kind of quite a process, but it's been a very amicable process with everyone involved, including the two churches, which I call the seller church and the buyer church as well. So we're here, this is the final step in our process. We have taken that property and received approval to subdivide it into two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2. And tonight, we are here asking to take Lot 1, which is on the right side of your screen, and rezone that from I-2 to C-1. And we will leave Lot 2, which has the existing church on it, as I-2.
Okay. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? Come on up. Mr. Stogner, I know who you are, but just for the record, if you'll, if you'll say your name.
Chadwick Stogner, 234 Crest Drive, thank you. Just a point of information is, I know there was a part of the code where the property had to be a certain acreage. Is that, was that considered, or?
My, so that's really a question for Mr. Smith or someone else on the fourth floor, but my understanding is that all the requirements have been met. Is that right, Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
It's a minimum acreage.
It's the minimum acreage.
Yeah, there's a minimum acreage in the, for I-2.
Was that for a development fleet?
No, just, yeah.
Right.
That's right. So it doesn't have to be three acres to maintain the I-2?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that was my point of information. So, you know, I just wanted to come up and say that I love how the way this worked out. And Alex, I know you and Mike and a lot of the people worked hard on that, so I give you my congratulations on doing that. I just feel like it was an elegant and divine way to work through it. And I think it'll be best for, for all the parties. I appreciate the buyers having a, you know, insight into how they could be problem solvers and make this work for the community. I think the citizens of Homewood are pro-business, but they also value the I-2, so I think this is a good solution. I do think, and I just wanted to highlight these real quickly, that this whole process raised two issues. One, the need for more childcare options. And just, you know, I was thinking about, Barry made a comment about how excited she was for the playground that was going to be special needs accessible. And I thought about how we have, as a community, leaned into accommodating people with special needs. And maybe, you know, we have a great, we have great education, maybe we could also lean into childcare options more. I know this is an issue coming up with outsourcing the after-school program to YMCA, so I know this is on the hearts and minds of a lot of people. And so I would just encourage us as a community to, to focus on that. And I think this issue brought that up. Also, the need for more public forums. I mean, y'all did a great job working through this, but I don't know if that would have been the case, if there wasn't a public forum. I know I, the buyers definitely had a change of heart, and they said so when they came up here, when they heard all the comments. So I don't think it's something that y'all should be afraid of. It's not, you know, a distraction. I think any way that we can have more public forums and more input, I mean, I think that's where a lot of the community's gotten upset with the process, is because they feel like they haven't been able to understand, or to communicate, or to raise objections, or offer other solutions. So I am thankful for the way this seems to have worked out, and I just look forward to being blessed by that church body, and, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kendrick.
Mr. Stogner, every zoning case that comes to the city of Homewood has a public hearing. That's required by law. That's not-
Not every issue has public hearing.
Every zoning case-
Every zoning does.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about just in general.
Well, if this issue was a zoning case, so every time there's a zoning issue, there's a public hearing.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that, that I was just making a plea. I said this brought up two points, and that was one of them, the more, I mean, you know, we, well, we have Facebook. I mean, you've pretty much outsourced a lot of the communication to a former BZA member, so I'm just saying, open it up. I think you'll find the community will support you.
Okay.
I think y'all do a lot of great work, and-
I don't want to get, I don't want to get too sidetracked here.
Yeah, that was my point.
No, no, I understand. I just wanted to address-
Mr. Kendrick extended his argument and changed the tone of it, so.
I just, I don't want to get sidetracked here, but I don't think anyone's outsourced anything to a member of the BZA. But, and I don't want anyone to be confused by that, that that's some sort of official comment of the city, is my only point. But, but anyway, I appreciate your comments.
This was a friendly, a friendly, congratulations.
Okay. All right, anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Nothing, I will close the public hearing. Ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Mr. Sims?
I do have one question for the applicant as it relates to just this development. I know there's 11,000 square feet structure involved. Have y'all had within your consideration of this, I mean, and this may be a subsequent phase, so maybe getting ahead of the zoning, but the traffic impact of that, and just thinking about the office hours of that facility? I'm assuming it would more or less be an eight to five type facility? And I'm just wanting to make sure that that's correct, because that would benefit what goes on across the road after five at the soccer fields most evenings. So just wanting to try to think ahead from a city planning standpoint, if that may cue any, you know, signals at the intersection and so forth. Because as it is now, it's already a very highly trafficked intersection in the evenings due to like Patriot League and Homewood Soccer. So I just wondered if the intention is that these businesses would be primarily eight to five professional office buildings?
I think, I mean, yes, I think that's the hope and the intent, but there's not a signed lease. But yeah, I think that is the hope. And that's certainly what the developers are working off of at the moment.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Sure.
Whoops, sure.
I just wanted to clarify on the parking. I think you guys had shared that there was going to be some sort of shared use since the peak hours. We're going to be probably alternating between-
Yes, that is correct. There'll be a cross parking easement recorded against the property to allow the, the two lots to share parking.
And so I was just trying to understand from the, from the drawing, the parking lot as it stands right now will be kind of absorbed into the current, the commercial zoning, is that right, for the commercial lot?
Not all of the parking will be in the commercial. So what you're looking at right there, the kind of shaded gray is what's existing, and then the darker black is what is proposed in that site plan. I, I don't want to represent that this is the final site plan. This has been a work in progress. And so I'm not even, not 100% sure, but we've been working with them to kind of figure out exactly what parking will be on each lot. The majority of the parking will be on the commercial lot then, yeah.
Yeah, that was my understanding. I just didn't know if you were still, yeah, still have the same intent. Thank you.
And I want to say I appreciate that, because I know, especially if it becomes a medical building, how much parking is required. And the use of a church while they're not there is a great solution for what's probably going to need six per thousand, whether people
consent.
So moved.
like it or not. It's six per thousand for a medical office, so I think that's a great
Second.
Who moved, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualdney,
solution.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you will give us a first reading. and a roll call vote please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I'd entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second. Who moved? I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, and a roll call vote please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
Alright, so now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms., Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Geer, and another roll call vote please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Andrus?
Abstain.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes, so that is eight to zero to one, and will be ordinance twenty-eight ninety-two.
Thank you. Thanks, all of you.
Alright, that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Geer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved nine to zero. That brings us to other new business. First item is oh-four, oh-three, twenty-four. Request set a public hearing for consideration of an amendment to the final development plan for Sanford University, eight-hundred Lake Shore Parkway, to permit the proposed construction of a new three-story addition to the existing north parking deck that would expand the current structure and add an additional five-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces as a means to accommodate the university's on-campus parking needs. This comes to us from the planning commission with a vote of five to zero favorable recommendation. This is also on the committee referral agenda. Just so everyone knows, this is a deck that was approved a long time ago. They've made some changes to the development plan to make it a little bit smaller and some lighting changes, so that's why it's coming back to us.
Angled a little bit. It's angled a little bit, because there's a building that.
So it, it's a little bit different. That, that's why it's coming back to us. Mr. Kendrick, I don't, we're cutting it kind of close here with the April, with our April dates. Would, can we make it by April eighth, or do we need to put it off till the twenty-second?
You have to do it April twenty-second.
To, April twenty-second, alright. So then we will set that public hearing for April twenty-second. Alright, next item, oh-five, oh-three, twenty-four. Mayor's update on Am Waste Pickup Services. I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So we had a meeting with Am Waste and the, for the Kahaba Solid Waste Authority at the end of last week. This, we were kind of their final meeting throughout all the municipalities that use the, the Kahaba Waste Authority. Simply, they're having to make some changes on days as far as pickups go in order to streamline their process. So they've listened to, and the reason they're doing this, from listening to customer feedback regarding the, the time of day for their service, a lot of people were complaining that their cans weren't getting picked up until later on in the evening. Sometimes they may not go until seven o'clock, and then they'd have to get pushed until the next morning. The, the reason or to resolve the issue is to try and load balance when their customer materials and collected volumes is to provide more consistent and earlier route completion. We want to be able to have people get their cans picked up early in the morning, and then by the time they get home, their cans are completely empty. Earlier route completion time is more, not only convenient, more convenient for residents and removal of cars from the streets, but also provides a safer environment for all that are concerned. And the expectation of the day move will be that all that are affected will only move, only change one time. This is a simple move from basically, so there will be an announcement that goes out in the mail as well as an interactive Google map that will be put on our website that will allow people to go in. They can type in their address. It'll show them which days they will be on. So, for example, where I live in West Homewood will, we are currently on Monday, Thursday. I will now be moving to Tuesday, Friday. And there will be other residents that are affected in the same way, but again, all of this will be on that map, and everybody will be getting a yellow mailer, bright yellow mailer, that will be coming in the mail in the next week. The hope is to, or excuse me, in the next few days, the interactive Google map should be done by the end of the week. And the hope is to have everything ready to go to make the swap the Monday after spring break, when everybody gets back. If you have been following the, the news, other municipalities are going through the same thing. They're losing their Wednesday, Saturday service in some areas. But again, it's all to make this more streamlined so that people can be assured that their cans are getting picked up in the mornings, and they can take their cans back up in the afternoons. So again, that was the, the update from, from Am Waste. And Chris, and Chris Thacker, Berkeley, myself, were all in attendance at the meeting, so they're aware. So his, his group is doing the same thing they've always been doing, which is getting ready for phone calls, because people will, will have questions for sure, but we're asking that each of you guys spread this word out as well. I can, I can send the list of addresses to you, but it's a very long list, so it may not be readable. So you may want to wait until that Google map comes out, but also let them know that that flyer is coming in the next few days. They'll see a giant yellow sticker or giant yellow pamphlet that'll come in the mail to all affected residents.
So not everybody changes.
Correct. Not everybody changes. That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Sims.
Yep.
First of all, thank you so much for your work on this, because I had, definitely have noticed progress since January when you first met with the authority in Am Waste, so really appreciate that.
It's been a road of work.
I've seen some changes, and, uh, thank you for that.
Yeah.
As we, as you referenced, you meeting with them and, you know, some of those timeframes in addition to the day changes. I think our contract currently says that pickup on your day will, for residents, will occur by seven PM, I believe, in the Am Waste contract. Are we talking about actually in, like, changing the contract and nailing that down to like six PM or five PM? Or do you think it'll still be contractually seven PM each day?
Our contract is a little bit longer. It's not like ten hours.
Okay.
So.
So that, that would actually be an authority question, and I'm guessing after they get through all of the municipal, municipality changes, that if that's something that they feel is necessary, then they can certainly change that contract.
Okay. I mean, so I just wanted to reference that since our contract's with the authority then.
Correct.
I mean, just to, if you can continue to champion that in the conversations, you know, if we want to get specific and, and can say five PM or six PM instead of seven, I think that's a benefit, because then the other lever we have in there is that if someone submits a complaint and it's not honored within a timely manner, you know, we have a lever there.
Twenty-four hours, that's right.
We can ask them to actually, you know, offset that cost or not. They can't bill that cost to us if they don't have been.
Correct.
Hold, uh, hold their end of the bargain, sorry.
That's right.
But basically, with that progression, I think we're going the right way. Really appreciate you for that, and, and hopefully we just, if we stay firm, we can continue to get exactly what a residence deserves. So thank you.
It deserves, that's correct. Well, and believe me, we're, we're holding their, holding their feet to the fire as, as often and as, as much as we can, so.
Alright.
Yeah, I also wanted to echo the, the thanks for, for the hard work on that. I've, I've noticed improvements, I think, throughout our part of, a part of town. They do seem to be coming earlier, so maybe to Mr. Sims's point, they, they may be starting earlier than they were previously, which you would, deduce would, would result in, uh, earlier times being, being completed.
Well, if you just, if you just, if you honestly looked at the amount of houses that they were picking up on that Monday, Thursday route compared to the Tuesday, Friday route.
It's too many.
It's astronomical.
Gotcha.
And so this, you know, and then the same thing goes with other municipalities and the changes they're making is they're trying to streamline the service so that everybody's, every pickup that you get, I mean, everybody's still going to get two pickups a day.
Right, right.
I still get two pickups a day. I'm just changing to Tuesday, Friday.
It's rough when you start the week off behind, though, right?
So, sure, sure. But, but again, I think this is, I think this is a, a good move to, to make sure that everybody's cans are getting picked up in a timely manner in the morning, so that by the time you get home, just like it has always been for our residents, your can is empty, and you can roll that can back up to your, to your house.
And then just to clarify, I, I don't think that this would be changing at all, but first pickup of the week still remains mixed.
Yes, yes.
Second would be non-recyclable.
None of that, none of that changes whatsoever. Correct.
Thank you.
Alright.
Anything else?
Alright, thank you, Mayor. I'd entertain a motion and a second to second, to accept the report from the mayor.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero. Alright, next item, oh-six, oh-three, twenty-four. Request to, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a contract and pay fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget appropriation for Thunder on the Mountain twenty-twenty-four. Brought to us by J.J. Bischoff. This is one of the budgeted items that we just need to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Motion to allow the mayor to sign that contract.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and will be resolution twenty-four thirty-four. Next item, oh-seven, oh-three, twenty-four. Request for consideration of an ABC-oh-twenty restaurant retail liquor license for FM Homewood LLC DBA Frothy Monkey located at nine-thirty Oxmoor Road. Brought to us by Bo Seacrest. Mr. Gualtney, where are we with it?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We have not received letters from police or fire yet, however, we do have the completed application, and the ABC board has completed their portion, which includes the background checks. So I would make a motion for approval pending approval by fire and police.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion from Mr. Gualtney, and a second from Mr. Wolverton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is nine to zero, is having no objection to the issuance of license. Last item, oh-eight, oh-three, twenty-four. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four through March eleven, twenty-twenty-four. Brought to us by Robert Riggett. Mr. Gualtney, I think this was you.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I reviewed the invoices this afternoon. Nothing jumped out that needed to have any questions answered. A lot of expenditures here at the end of the quarter. I did notice one interesting item, though. Our Canine, one of our Canines Titan, he got his own ballistic vests, so extra safe out there on the patrol. So I did not know Canines could get ballistic bulletproof vests. Just the interesting things you learn when you get to review, review the invoices. So with that, with no questions, I would make a motion for approval.
Alright, motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved nine to zero, and will be resolution twenty-four thirty-five. Which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, you've already given us some. Feel free to give us some more. Yep?
Um, no, just a, a couple of, kind of, I guess, feel-good announcements. Had a wonderful time at the Exceptional Foundation Chili Cook-Off two weeks ago. Didn't really get to talk about that last week, but unbelievably, they made over five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in gross proceeds for the day. So I mean, they absolutely killed it on Saturday. They couldn't, couldn't have asked for better weather. I know everybody was afraid it was going to rain. Robbie was texting me the night before going, oh, my goodness, what are we going to do? And it, and it turned out beautifully, so very excited for the Exceptional Foundation. By the way, Robbie and I are in talks for the date for the basketball game. I don't have an, an exact date for you yet, but I will let you know as soon as he gets back to me. Congrats to the Homewood School Foundation for another great Homewood-grown event. Last Friday, I saw Mr. Gualtney there. There were a lot of, a lot of people there celebrating our schools and the foundation. It was, it was a wonderful event as always. We have the Homewood Athletic Foundation Cornhole Event, which is this coming Sunday, out on the plaza in front of you. And then Taste of Homewood is on March twenty-first. I think J.J. may have talked to everybody. If not, go see J.J. And then the Kiwanis Club Pancake Breakfast was this past Saturday, so they had a lot of people at the Exceptional Foundation cooking pancakes and sausage, and I actually had six girls that spent the night the night before. So this was a perfect opportunity for me to just go buy nine pancake breakfasts and bring them home to, to take care of that, so that's it.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Gualtney?
I will set public safety immediately following finance. I don't have any comments besides it was an excellent schools foundation event. They exceeded their expectations, so it's always great to see the community come together and give and, and help do some excellent projects for the teachers in their classrooms and, and those around them, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Geer?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the applicants for the Arts Council. I think it's pretty awesome that we filled four spots in a month, and there's a lot of excitement on the Arts Council now. We have new leadership, Amber Parsons Allen from Ward Two, and Shannon Amorello from Ward One is responsible for the art gallery downstairs. There's a very exciting exhibit coming next month. I'm not going to announce it just yet, but we're going to have an opening and some live music, and it's really awesome. So I look forward to telling you about that hopefully in a couple of weeks. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
I don't have any comments today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Um, just wanted to thank Randy, Streets Department. They have changed out a plethora of signs as part of our initiative to unify all the signage in the city, the street signs. But then also, they had installed, this is, it's been about a month, but installed one of the blinky lights across from the park, Patriot Park, which I think was sorely needed to help make that crosswalk a little more safe. And then we are actually going to have the Street Safety Day between Halcat and Patriot Park and with the Police Department on April twelfth is the plan. So just wanted to thank all parties for that, and obviously, it's, it's been going for several years now, and it's always a great time for the kids to get out, but also to kind of bring all those parties together, to work collectively. Let's see, I wanted to thank Sawyer Woodworth, who was hired this, this past year in Parks and Rec Department. She's done a fantastic job, kind of building and, and championing the volleyball program for Homewood. I think it's something that obviously she identified as an area to, to grow. She had a fall season, which was, we didn't participate the year prior, but, but by all accounts, this year was much more successful. Lots of good numbers, lots of good feedback, and then she's actually gone out of her way to create a spring league this spring. My daughter's playing with the mayor's daughter on Sunday afternoons and practicing throughout the week. So just a great opportunity to utilize some of those space and the, the resources that, you know, the city put, put a good bit of money and thought into, so in these off-seasons. So thanks to Sawyer and Parks and Rec. And then the Halcat Talent Show is on Friday evening, so if you're looking for something entertaining to do, it'll be at the high school, I believe at six PM. And then, just pray for me, I'm coaching nine U Soccer this spring, so I've got a whole bunch of, like, fourteen rowdy eight, nine-year-olds. And then I go straight from that on Tuesday nights to coaching four-year-olds, so, yeah.
Coaching is a loose term at that age.
Very much so, very much so. But, but it's an exciting time, so we, you know, it's always fun. We've had good weather. I just feel, feel, you know, blessed and thankful to be in the community that we have and to have all the things that we have to offer, so that's it.
Thank you.
And I, I did not, I didn't see any agenda items, so we're not setting.
And, Mr. President, I also don't need to set public safety, so Bo, will you mark that off your list? Yeah. I thought we had that one item, but it came out this week. No public safety.
No public safety, no public work. Alright, Mr. Sims?
Thanks. A lot of awesome stuff going on in the community. Just wanted to reference two things. One is, again, the Saturday is the Bell Center 5K. They have their registration capped at seven-hundred, and they have met that. So it's really exciting that they have that many registrants for, for this Saturday, so please plan accordingly traffic-wise, and also come on out and enjoy the festivities if you can. Also, speaking of exciting things going on, my son is super excited. Every time we pass Central Park, can't wait to see when the playground's going to be open, and I also have heard a lot of positive feedback and excitement from other residents, so just thanks to the park board, everyone involved who's making that happen, and everybody's just waiting, like, for Christmas morning for that thing to open, so it can all be enjoyed and, and the fun can begin, so thanks to everyone involved on that.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Smith?
I also don't need to set special issues, but of course, finance will be at five. Sanford is currently leading in the SoCon championship game. Yep, so if they, basically if they win, they, they'll get the, a bid to the dance, so that's exciting. They've had a great season. Yeah, so that's, that's going on right now. Taste of Homewood is on the twenty-first, out on the plaza. I was at the Chamber office today. My dear, sweet friend Shay Gartman has been named the new executive director of the Chamber, so I'm extremely excited about that. She is ready to go. She's a little overwhelmed at the moment, because they have Hop and Shop, Taste of Homewood, and their. She's a little overwhelmed at the moment because they have Hop and Shop, Taste of Homewood, and their March Luncheon all in the same week. But Taste of Homewood is going to be awesome. Just hoping for good weather for them. We had our forum for the Historic Preservation Commission last Wednesday night at the library. A speaker from the Alabama Historical Preservation Commission came to talk about windows. It was lovely. And I think that is all. Yep, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Okay. So I do need to set P and D. So it looks like it's me and Walter. That has got to be a first for you not to have set that meeting, I swear. And Representative, or Counselor Alamon may not have had anything to say, but I have something to say. I would like to congratulate him for the Albert Schweitzer Fellowship of Alabama Humanitarian of the Year 2024. So congratulations to you for that. So congratulations. And I also wanted to, again, give good wishes and prayers to the band. I was at the mattress sale yesterday and I got caught up with Chris Cooper and Terrance Cobb. And tennis team's doing great. Winston is having a particularly good year. And they are ready. The, the instruments have arrived. He was sending out another email. Parents are not allowed to go into the airport tomorrow. They can say their goodbyes at the curb and send the kids. Yes, correct. And there are kids coming from all over. Some are going through Charlotte, some are going through Philadelphia. And it's just going to be just controlled mass chaos. But how exciting. And this, he said, he said, if you, he said, I want the people of Homewood to know, if you dream it, you can do it. He said, he took, when he first started, Ron Pence, they went and Director Pence said, no more, I'm never doing that again. And so Chris Cooper said, you know what? It was time to do this again. And he said, in Homewood, if you dream it, you can do it. So anyway, just congrats to the band. What an honor. So. 96, 97?
Been a couple of years.
That's what he said. 97? Yeah, 96. Okay. Yeah, that's what he said. And he said, never again. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Harden?
It's going to be a while. No, I, I really don't have anything other than appreciate all the hard work everybody does to keep this city going.
All right. I'm just going to echo something that Mr. Sims said about the playground coming. I actually got stopped in the store by one of Homewood's youngest residents. She was one and it was a little hard to understand what she was telling me, but her mother swears that what she was telling me was she couldn't wait for the playground to be there and that she misses what's the time where it hadn't been there. So they were, I think you're right. I think everyone's looking forward to it. So with that, we will be adjourned and see everyone in a couple of weeks.